Approval of several minutes, we'll start with the regular minutes of April 4, 2018. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Ralph, is there a second?
Seconded.
Jim, any changes, errors, omissions, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries, April 18.
Oh, so moved. I moved to the program.
Second.
Seconded by Ralph, any changes, errors, omissions? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries, budget workshop, March 27, we'll start with.
So moved.
Second.
Any changes? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries, April 3.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Ralph, any comments, questions? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries, April 4, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries, April 11, budget workshop.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Ralph, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No abstentions, motion carries, and the special meeting of April 24, 2018.
So, so moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries. Under communications and correspondence, I do have a, it's the mock-up of what will be the Portland Airline Trail brochure. This is not the final copy, but I wanted to share it. There will be a ribbon cutting on June the 2nd. Everyone's invited, it's also, June 2nd is also the date of Connecticut Trails Day. So if anyone would like to pick up these brochures, I think there's some in the library, there's some at Town Hall, and as part of that Trail Day, the Airline Trail will have a guided hike as well. So you're all welcome to attend. And I also have another event that's coming up on June 9th with a rain date of June 10th, and it's the Annual Music and Arts Festival. That'll be at the Portland Riverfront Park. There'll be music, food, arts, crafts, and, let's see, five bands. So that starts at noon, I believe, yeah, until 8:00 PM. So there's flyers here, if anyone would like some, hit them up. Welcome to attend. The next item is public comment. Is there any public comment? Okay, we'll start in the front row, and if you go to the microphone, you must give us your name and address, please. I can't hear you.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Anna Bemarusak, 97 Mill, 6th Avenue Extension, and I'm here tonight to-
Could you wait one minute and make sure that Mrs. Sienna didn't, could you spell your name for her, please? Thank you very much.
I'm here to talk about Rocky tonight, a dog that belongs to Portland resident Mr. Bell, and when I read the article in the River East, I was very upset to, I was very
I live at 12 Russell Avenue with two dogs and two children, which the dogs are also
upset. I know Rocky bit a man, and that man was injured, but I was told by Ms. Bransfield
my children, so let's say four altogether. I also volunteer for a dog rescue and foster.
that the man has recovered, and I'm happy to hear that. I understand that Rocky and Mr. Bell both received consequences for the accident, and
So I'm well-versed at having many different types of breeds, many different types of
I believe now it's time to let Rocky come home.
dogs, and I've learned over the past 12 years of being a pet owner that training comes
He's been locked up at the Portland Pound for more than two years now, and even people are giving second chances when they do worse crimes.
not only with the dog, but with the individual who owns the dog.
So it's my understanding that this is within Ms. Bransfield's control to allow Rocky to
And I feel that in the case of Rocky and his owner, that we can train both, or help
go home. So I'm here to, tonight, to ask Ms. Bransfield, please let Rocky go home.
train both, or give the means to free Rocky and let Rocky live where he belongs, which
I know Mr. Bell is willing to put safety measures in place, so it'd be good if you had a meeting with him and worked on an agreement.
is with his owner.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
And I am here to say, let's free Rocky and give him the chance that he deserves.
Anyone else in the front row? Thank you. Anyone else in the second row? Second row? In the third row? Yes.
The last part is G-E-R-R-I-E-R-Hayfen-S-A-T-A-G-A-J. There'll be a spelling test on that one later. I wanted to come in because we, I have-
Could you give your address, please?
Oh, 111 Collins Hill. Okay.
Thank you.
I wanted to come in and find out what's going on with the going-on five-years-old Kelly zoning violation. I sent an email to your office, and I haven't heard anything.
I have, don't have an answer, a full answer for you. We have sent a request to Mr. Kelly's attorney, and I did ask our attorney again to give me an answer. I do have a scheduled phone conference with her tomorrow. As of, I want to say yesterday, Melissa, she did not have an answer for me, because before the suggested action that Mr. Kelly, I shared with you through your neighbor, Mrs. Hoy, who was in to see me-
I was gonna say, we didn't get a copy of it.
Well, Mrs. Hoy took a copy with your name on it.
And I do, and I do appreciate that, but she's not my agent, but go, please go ahead.
Okay, that's fine. She volunteered to take it, so I was happy to-
That's, that's fine.
-let her. So I don't have a full answer, because before I can do so, I have to get some information from the town attorney who's handling the matter.
And what kind of information?
It has to do with the driveway. For those who don't know, there's a driveway that was gravel, and that was the agreement for this particular residence, and the owner of the residence paved the driveway and was asked to not do so. And so there was a zoning violation that ensued, and there was a process that was agreed that the owner of the property was in violation of the zoning rule. And so we have been working with the owners of 111 Collins Hill, Mrs. Sataj and her husband, as well as the neighbors next door, to see if there's an amicable solution. We've gotten close, but there's been an exchange of ideas that are not shared by everyone, hasn't been signed off by anyone. So the owner of the property that had the zoning violation has offered to return the driveway to gravel. But before that can happen, I wanted to have the town engineer, as well as Public Works and zoning, agree in the methodology. So we did ask the owner of the property's attorney to let us know how they are going to proceed before.
Has there been timelines or anything like that placed around this? Or is it, are we, this comes to a screeching halt every year when they go to Florida. He's not getting any fines, no fines, on a four-plus-year-old zoning violation.
We don't have fines in town for zoning, as I've explained to you before.
But it says-
And in terms of the time-
That we do.
In the terms of the timeline-
Mm-hmm.
The owner of the property indicated 20 days. I don't have the material with me here tonight, so I can't give you what date that is, I don't remember.
Well, the letter was dated the 16th.
Oh, so you did see the letter?
I never said that I didn't.
Oh, I thought you said you did.
No.
Forgive me, I thought you did.
I know, I never said that. I said that you didn't send me a copy.
Oh, thank you.
And the agreement was that we would be apprised as to what was going on, and I would appreciate it if we stuck to that agreement. Doesn't that sound good? Sounds fair, right? Reasonable?
When I get an answer from the attorney, I will be happy to get it to you. I don't have an answer, Melissa, I apologize, I don't have the full answer.
But a simple acknowledgement, this is what we're doing right now, will save me? I don't feel like coming up here after work. It's a courtesy, right? Are we in agreement about that, at least? Not unreasonable for expecting a response.
I will be happy to give you the answer when I have it, absolutely.
Thank you. Do you have anything, Bob?
Well, so, you know, as Melissa mentioned-
Could you give your name, Mr. Sataj?
Yes, right, sorry. Robert Sataj.
Thank you.
111 Collins Hill, Portland, Connecticut, 06480. Yeah, so Melissa's mentioned, this is going on five, six years. It'll be six, trust me.
Yes.
Because they allow Joe Kelly to winter in Florida for six months every year, and this comes to a screeching halt, nothing happens, accommodating the perpetrator who instigated the zoning violations. So I mean, that's two and a half years this stood still with, and every time, we've been nothing but proactive, and Ms. Bransfield and Ms. Olson try to point to, well, we can't come to an agreement, when, how could, I mean, first of all, we can, we've been very cooperative, but yet, you've been very biased in handling Kelly, accommodating him. How could you allow him to go to Florida for two years without handling this situation? Meanwhile, ourselves and our neighbors are in peril and hazard from that water coming down off of that driveway. There's no accountability for Joe Kelly whatsoever, and it's understa, whereas, I read it in the newspaper, where there's a disabled family with a driveway, the O'Keefes, who, there's a lawsuit pending on this.
It's not, it's-
And threatened with fines and levies. Nothing for Joe Kelly, nothing like that has come to fruition whatsoever. So you allow him to, you've been accommodating him for two years, and I'm not sure why. Can you explain to me why?
I will, again, explain for the audience, so they understand. Both neighbors are downhill from Mr. Kelly's property, and we have been working with the neighbors, the Satajs, as well as the neighbors to the north of the driveway, as well as Mr. Kelly. And we have a tentative agreement between your property and Mr. Kelly, but the other property, there is not a reach for an actual answer.
All right, so we want to be sure that we can review any plans coming up. As Melissa mentioned, we were not apprised of it.
There has been no action, I just want to assure you, there's no action at this point. There was a letter.
Right.
And I will get you an answer as soon as-
Well, we don't know that. Alls we know is it's a 20-day notice, and work, as he did initially, without any accountability from the town whatsoever, and-
Yeah, I've visited your property many times, and we did have many meetings. I don't, I, one person at a time, please, Melissa.
Just clarifying.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so, you know, related to that, I mean, it's very unreasonable, this has been going on for as long as it has, while ourselves and the neighbors remain-
You're right.
Yes. And it's, it's really uncalled for, and I don't trust, it's hard to believe, based on history, that, you know, the summer, two months goes by fast, three months goes by fast. The perpetrator, Kelly, was supposed to be at many meetings that we've had, and he didn't show up. Excuses are made for him. He trespassed on my property. Called the police. You say you make no excuses for him, and you're, the attorney, Olson, treat, you know, her responses are reprimands from us when we try to find out information. It's very unfair treatment, one-sided. Now, my understanding is that George Law is representing Kelly in this new situation, and I don't know, if George Law's still on the Ethics Committee, he needs to be recused. And also, I sent a letter to the Ethics Committee to have the situation investigated, because I feel your behavior and Olson's behavior has been unethical, and I also feel that you may have some family relations with Kelly, and that may be biasing your proactivity with this case to draw, it's very conspicuous, my understanding is, there is relations through, what, a sister-in-law, and I think it's impacting your decision-making, and I'm asking for an independent investigation of ethics to look into your handling, mismanagement of this situation.
Thank you, Mr. Sataj.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else in that same row? The next row behind? Yes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tom Page, I'm an animal rights litigator out of Hartford. I live in Hartford. I was asked to come down here tonight and-
Could you just give us your address, please?
Sure, 226 Kenyon Street in Hartford.
Thank you.
My first name is Thompson, T-H-O-M-P-S-O-N, last name Page, P-A-G-E. I only want to address one short issue with the selectmen that are here tonight, and my partner and I have litigated dangerous dog proceedings, like Rocky's situation, in 27 states, and they often end up with a political component, and what I've been told that has been discussed or claimed is that the town faces potential liability if they were to release this dog and Rocky was to bite somebody in the future. And, of course, that sounds very logical, but the reality is, is that if Rocky were to be released, let's say with a restraint order, that he has to be muzzled whenever he's out, that the fence has to be built, all kinds of reasonable restraints, and he gets out and he bites somebody, and he's not muzzled. The plaintiff, the dog bite victim, when they sue, is going to sue Mr. Bell because he didn't muzzle the dog. The ability of that plaintiff to then say the town was negligent because they issued a reasonable restraint order to muzzle the dog? No, they were prudent when they issued the restraint order. So the idea that logically it sounds like, well, if the dog got out and the town had him at some point, they would therefore be exposed to liability. And we could debate this forever, but what I would ask the selectmen to do is to search the town's records for any, any claims and liability of the town for a dog bite of a dog they previously had possession and control over. And I think I know what the answer's going to be. As long as the town was reasonable in their behavior, which I assume the town would be, there can't be any liability. I've never heard of a town, and I've done this in many states, I've never heard of a town issuing a reasonable restraint order, and then the owner violating it clearly. I deal, most of my clients are irresponsible dog owners. They violate the order, they're liable for the negligence of the dog biting somebody else. The town is not liable, because they didn't act negligently, they acted reasonably. And I don't know what your records show, but before you make the decision that we've got a liability issue and therefore we've got to kill this dog, I would check your own records and any other state, a town in the state of Connecticut, for the town's liability in a negligence action for not killing a dog because of, if the dog got out and bit somebody, the town would be seen as negligent. I don't think you'll find one in your town or any other town in the state of Connecticut. That is a, that is a causation issue that just doesn't exist, because you are reasonable, and that's the definition of negligence, is not being reasonable. And as long as you issue an order, you know, it's like, it's like the state of Connecticut, somebody beats somebody up, they go to jail, they get out on bond, right? And they go beat somebody else up. You think that person could sue the state? The state followed reasonable procedures. The state's not negligent. You cannot be declared negligent because someone else's criminal or negligent behavior. It's got to be your own. So the town of Portland, being reasonable and issuing reasonable restraints on the owner who would be liable for their property, dogs are property, but their dog's activity, the future bite, certainly Mr. Bell would be liable, and he should be. The law would hold him liable. But to get to the town is a totally different, totally different issue. You act reasonable, you're covered. That's how negligence works. So I would hope that you'd look into your own records before too many more government officials say, we can't let that dog loose, we'd be liable. Well, go back and see all the dogs you've ever had, go back and see if any of them have ever bitten, and you've ever been held liable, and I'll, I'm almost positive, I don't have the record, so I can't be positive, you haven't been liable, because you've been reasonable. The seven of you have taken reasonable steps, and you've directed that the town do a reasonable job in enforcing the rules of the town, and you issued a restraint order against the owner. He violates it, he's liable. You're not liable, you weren't negligent, you were reasonable. I hope, I hope that made some sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone in the next row? Okay, you're next.
Hi, guys, my name's Natalie McNeil, N-A-T-A-L-I-E-M-A-C, capital N-E-A-L. I've been, sorry, 239 Sand Hill Road, Portland, Connecticut.
Thank you.
I've been rescuing, advocating, and training dogs my entire life, and I'm a student in behavior and psychology. I get asked to evaluate dogs all the time, so I know what an aggressive dog looks like, and the issue with Rocky. He's not an aggressive dog, and he didn't get enough time for training with his owner. It's being offered to him now, resources, anything he needs to meet any requirements if you do decide to let him live. You know, as a resident, that would make me feel better and be able to educate people more to prevent this from happening, you know? So my evaluation of him, he's a great dog, he's capable of so many good things if he's given a chance. He's not, doesn't show any insecurity, he submitted to me pretty quickly, he wants to learn and he wants to please, you know? So he was set up with human error, and it could have been prevented and it should have been, but, you know, all of us as dog owners, we aren't perfect. We learn from our mistakes, and each animal's different, each situation is different, how people react, energy, that's how animals judge. People complicate things, dogs are simple, you know, this is an easy thing to fix. So as long as they follow the guidelines with muzzle, fencing, training, and dumbing down the naturally protectiveness and territorial, you know, tendencies of any dog, so much, you know, change could happen to society and the way things are handled. So that's a big part of what I do in my mission, you know, this really hits home with me. I have three pit bulls, you know, I advocate, and they're being trained to be service dogs, I train other people's dogs. So I just want everybody to know it's there for them if they need it. You have to be clear and set boundaries with dogs, and it's something people need to learn. And unfortunately, in society, people have gotten really lazy and expect things to be instantaneous, and they're not. We're always evolving, and we're always learning, so just give them a chance, give me a chance as his trainer. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the last row? If not, we'll go to the next row? Yes.
Hi, my name is Caroline Valesi, 7 Jordan Lane, Portland. Susan, we had a conversation already, and-
Yes.
Susan was telling me that she's working with the ACO to do educational program in the future, and that's all well and good. I'm, I'm new here, I don't know much about this case, and I hope that this new grassroots campaign- I will write down all the sites, so I can read about the court proceedings and that. What I'm interested in is not finding fault, but being proactive, because we're going to do something. They've started this grassroots campaign, and we love this dog, Rocky, he's like one of ours. Why has he been there for two years? Is that because of the lawsuit? I don't need answers right now. What I, what's most on my mind tonight is, I believe Paul said that he's been walking this dog since October 2017, and all of a sudden, last week, someone said he couldn't. I, you know, I feel like, let's put a hospice program down for Rocky if he's going to be like this. You know, nowadays, we love our dogs. I like dogs more than humans, as a matter of fact. And, you know, I want to be proactive with everyone, I, I don't want this to be a battle, I want to find solutions. But I will be behind this grassroots. If they, we can, whatever you need us to do, we'll do. We'll start GoFundMe, we'll supply all the fencing, someone's already offered it to Paul at cost. I don't know what else is involved, but I'd like to learn more. But I want to see Rocky walked again. Is that, can you comment on that, or let me go to sleep tonight reasonably?
Well, Rocky is to be remaining within the fenced-in area. Our animal control officer was advised by her supervisor, who is a police officer, that we will not have Rocky being walked outside of the fenced-in area.
As he has been since October.
As he had been.
That sounds political to me.
Police were aware that that had been-
That sounds political to me, Susan.
It's not political.
All of a sudden, something happens, a police officer?
No, it's a safety matter, and there's also been a process, and, and I know we may have briefed, I may have briefed you on some of it, it is a rather lengthy process, obviously, it's been a couple of years. I don't have all of the records with me here, so I can't, you know, give you all the dates and so forth, but-
I, I don't understand that. I don't understand how something can go on for so long, and all of a sudden, they find out that people are concerned, and then we'll put a stop to this, because that's what it feels like. It feels like retaliation of some sort. Now, can the police, can we come to the next meeting and keep voicing our concerns?
Of course, you can come to all of our meetings.
Okay, would you think you could have-
Welcome to public comment.
Thank you. Do you think you could have that officer here next month?
Well, we can get you more information, definitely.
If I know who his supervisor is, and where this is really coming from and why, all of a sudden, and-
Well, you know, and we need, we would have more information for you, Caroline, and be happy to do that-
Great.
-in relation to some of the things that we've talked about, in terms of, of the care of the dog, that is something that we can certainly go over and be happy to do that.
Can, can we do anything now to make his life better, as in the public?
Well, I think you're doing your best that you feel tonight, and that's certainly appropriate to come to the selectmen and to voice your opinions at this point. I think that is a very, very beneficial thing to do, to always let us know what you're thinking. One, one minute, please, one at a time, one at a time, thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll see you at every meeting, I guess, from here on in.
Okay, Caroline, thank you.
It's nice meeting you.
Thank you.
It is a rather, um, lengthy process, obviously, it's been a couple of years. Um, I don't have all of the records with me here, so I can't, you know, give you all the dates and so forth, but, um, there has been.
I don't understand that, I don't understand how something can go on for so long and all of a sudden, uh, they find out that people are concerned and then we'll put a stop to this, 'cause that's what it feels like. It feels like retaliation of some sort. Now, can the police, can we come to the next meeting and keep voicing our concerns?
Of course, you can come to all of our meetings.
Okay, would you think you could have?
Welcome public comment.
Thank you. Do you think you could have that officer here next month?
Well, um, we can get you more information, definitely.
If I know who his supervisor is and where this is really coming from and why, all of a sudden?
Yeah.
And, uh...
Well, you know, and we need, we would have more information for you, Carol Anne, and be happy to do that, um, in relation to some of the things that we've talked about in terms of, of, um, the care of the dog, that is something that we can certainly go over and be happy to do that.
Can, uh, can we do anything now to make his life better as in the public?
Well, I think you're doing your best that you feel tonight, um, and that's certainly appropriate to come to the selectmen and to voice your opinions. At this point, I think that is, uh, a very, very beneficial thing to do, to always let us know what you're thinking. One, one minute, please, one at a time, one at a time. Thank you.
All right, thank you, we'll see you at every meeting, I guess, from here on in.
Okay, Carol Anne, thank you.
It's nice meeting you.
Well, you just won't be recorded if you want it to be recorded? You don't have to, but if you want it to be.
That will be on record, that is fine.
As this wonderful woman in her wonderful speech spoke and said, "Why? Why? What has changed from when he was walking the dog for the past two years to now? What has changed?" Because if it's illegal and he shouldn't be walking the dog, then that should have happened two years ago.
I don't, the police were not aware that the dog was being walked, I will tell you that.
So it took two years for, so what kind of police force do we have that they say it took two years for them to notice this dog?
There's also been, let me also point out.
Okay, go ahead.
Let me also point out that there's also been a process by which, um, this, the dog's case has been through a hearing officer, a behaviorist, as well as the commissioner of agriculture. Um, and there may also be additional legal matters that I, I need to, to check into.
Okay, I just find it, just like the media makes everything bigger and people get pregnant before a movie comes out, I just find it very bizarre to think that for two years, nothing happened. For, I didn't know about Rocky for two years. I only knew about Rocky when that article came out in the paper, okay? Dogs need exercise, dogs need love, dogs are worse than humans when it comes to training. You need to train the owner and you need to train the dog. That dog is not being benefited or being helped until all of a sudden now, he can't walk his dog. The dog is evil. The do, this is, rules, I am a rule follower, I do not break rules. I have my own dogs, I follow rules, am I right all the time? Absolutely not. Do I do things wrong? Absolutely. However, I, I like to say that if I make a mistake, I fix it. I find it bizarre that after two years, finally the police are getting involved. I feel that after two years, if, and if it was illegal, okay, then it should have been illegal two years ago. It should have not been illegal now, it should have been illegal a year ago, maybe, the police didn't know. But what kind of police presence do we have if for two years, something illegal going on doesn't get resolved?
Right, and I think as Carol Anne asked, um, we can certainly get you some better answers.
That would be great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments?
I can't see on that side.
Also? All right, thank you very much. The next item on our agenda, um, number seven, set public hearing date for the 2018 Neighborhood Assistance Act program. Um, and you were, I think, given some information on this program. It is a way for nonprofits to raise money. We, excuse me, we did participate in the program in 2015 and CRT has asked to participate in this program. And before we can, we have to set a public hearing to allow others to know that we will be participating in the Neighborhood Assistance Act program. And, um, I would ask that you consider the next regularly scheduled meeting, which I believe is the 16th of May, and we could have the public hearing at 7 o'clock. And it would be to provide the town of Portland the opportunity to participate in the 2018 Neighborhood Assistance Act program, allowing interested nonprofit organizations within the municipality to submit applications. And whereas in accordance with the state of Connecticut, Department of Revenue Services, the board of selectmen would hold a public hearing on all the programs and the governing body must approve the programs. Now therefore be it resolved that I would be the liaison as first selectman to handle the Neighborhood Assistance Act program. But before we can do that, we have to have a public hearing so other people would know about it. So is there a motion to approve the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to have a public hearing on May 16th to address the Neighborhood Assistance Act program.
At what time?
At 6:00. 6:00 AM, uh, PM.
6:00?
Yep.
Why not still leave it 7?
You said, didn't you say 6?
Well, 7, 7. I should have said 7 if I, excuse me if I said 6. I think 7 is... Ralph?
Cause there's that event at 6:30 at the library.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
There's the event at the library here that...
At 6:30.
That gave you a 6:30.
So 7 would be okay? Okay, 7.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Any opposed? The extensions, while she carries. Um, the next is number eight, resolution for the reappointment of the engineering firm for design consultant services for the Town Center Village District Overlay Zone. And we are using anchor engineering and every year, we bring this back to the selectmen for authorization to sign another agreement with them for, um, June, it's gonna be July 1 through June 30, 2019. And we did, um, send you a copy of the contract. There would be no change other than the dates.
What are we, um, is that in our budget? What do we pay, or what do we?
Actually, we don't pay for this, this is paid for by, um, the applicant. So a tier one fixed fee is $110, a tier two fixed fee is $275, and a tier three minimum fixed fee is $2,300. Uh, it all depends on the level of the review and many of the tier one applications are done by the council of governments for no consideration.
Are we having discussion now or are we gonna second it first?
Um, there, there should be a motion to approve the extension. Is there a motion to approve the extension? Lou, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded, now discussion.
Um, I think I said this, the last few times this comes up, and if I didn't, I apologize. I don't believe we should be charging the residents for this service, to give you guys an idea of what, what this is, is we have a village district that was created quite a while ago, there was a survey sent out, a lot of people in Portland wanted it, I think it is a good thing. I don't think it's a good thing that we then penalize these same people that wanna better their property. For example, if they wanna put new windows and siding and they live in the village district and it's a tier four, I believe, is there, does it go up to four?
I think it's just three then.
We stop at the three and it's a little over 2,000 or something?
Depending on, I guess, the extent of the application.
I think they can hit 4,000, for some reason I can remember, there's a potential that I always thought it could hit 4,000.
Possible.
And I don't think that's right. I think it's counterproductive, I think it's wrong. Um, I personally would like to table this tonight and have more discussion, there were some few other residents that were bringing this up. It doesn't achieve what we want. If we wanna clean up our main street and then we're penalizing the property owner by charging this fee, that's wrong.
Well, you don't have to charge them, you can change the agreement.
Yes, I agree.
But then it would have to be out of our town budget.
Out of the planning and zoning, correct, the planning and zoning budget?
No, there's nothing in the budget for this, Ben.
Well, they have dollars in that budget, we would have to see what we've allocated, right? We have a planning and zoning budget.
Um, hold on, there, there, there is...
And you may be right, Susan, there may not be enough in there, I think that's what you're getting at.
Yeah, hold on.
Um, but I, and I, they...
You can take it out of contingency, but you are, and, and I can tell you there, the one that is going to be coming up is Brainerd Place and you would have to pay for their review and that could be substantial. Uh, and I would counter that they should be able to afford their review, um, based on the application, which is a $40 million application. Um, they should be able, maybe not, um, you can cap it, um, and all of the tier ones, which is the smaller, I agree, we shouldn't be charging for tier one and we don't. Those go to the council of governments.
The, the entire Elmcrest project is in, in the village district, correct?
No, but I don't know how much they're gonna require, Ben.
It would be, well, I think their jurisdiction is one property deep along Main Street, if I recall, and they wouldn't have jurisdiction.
The Hart Jarvis House would be there too, right?
No, I, I don't believe that is in the one property deep, I think it's the Four Leenies.
But they're gonna be...
Four Leenies was a separate entity on Main Street and I think that's the one that, I could be wrong.
The Hart Jarvis House is moving, the nonprofit is moving it to Main Street.
Yeah, but it won't fall in at our new village district, that's just...
From the bridge?
Yeah, that's staying on the Elmcrest property, not going on the open space that we owned by the bridge.
No, it won't go on our...
Right, it won't go on ours and I believe it's only one property deep, so therefore even that house would still fall outside of it.
I guess if you want, you want to pay for their review.
What I want is, I don't want a plan in place, in my opinion, that is counterproductive. Here we are, a lot of the properties, you gave a great example where maybe the fee would be appropriate and could be afforded, but I, I can think of...
How about this, how about if we bring you any fees? And it could be this body's authority to waive those fees and that is certainly within your, your realm if you wanted to waive a fee for this. But I, I really think there's cases where maybe the town should not be paying for it, this is a new development of a substantial nature and I'm not certain that the taxpayers should be paying for, um, the review of their design.
I guess if we could compromise, if we could have a couple of answers for the next meeting. Number one, where is the line? And I believe it's one property deep and I believe all of that, what you just mentioned would fall out of it, except the potential pharmacy that they've discussed. Uh, and number two, um, how much did people pay last year? I wanna know.
I can get to that, I don't remember.
No, no, and I don't think it's a big number. I think what, what we're talking about here is there's a lot of people that I have personally spoken with that aren't doing repairs because they don't wanna pay the fees.
But one year, one year, you may remember this, we set aside some money, Ben, and we asked, um, businesses if they wanted to have the reviews and I believe we waived it that year. So that, it is your authority to do that if you wish to. Um, I mean, you don't wanna be arbitrary, you don't wanna say, well, this person has to pay, this person doesn't have to pay.
That's, right.
Um, but to not have for a level three, which can be a substantial amount of money, I can definitely agree with you on the level one, maybe even the level two, but for the level three, which would be a substantial amount of review, I don't know that the taxpayers should pay that.
But let me give, let me give you an example. We're talking about if somebody owns a, a house, a level three, I believe, would be siding, windows and roof, a full exterior, right, Susan?
Well, let's take a look.
Okay, yeah, and I, and I'm going...
Tier three design reviews may include step one, the consultant team may engage in early discussions with the applicant and staff. Um, the town may charge tier two or three application fee to the applicant to pay for the consultant's team review work. Step two, informal presentation, submittal of schematic site designs, um, and architectural plans for review with town staff. Consultant team may provide specific design recommendations or may waive the formal review and forward a recommendation directly to the town. Step three, a formal presentation, a written project description with necessary supporting materials submitted for review by the town and team. Two weeks following the submittal, a meeting shall be set to review the application with town staff and the consultant team and the applicant. Step four, summary review, the consultant team prepares a summary review for the town with the possible outcomes of A, accept the application as presented, B, accept with modifications as noted, C, recommend not accepting the application for specific reasons and request that the application be revised and resubmitted, and D, take no action pending further discussion of re-submission. So that is the process by which they go through. The tier three represents significant land use changes or construction and reconstruction of site facilities. Review shall be based on the total gross square footage of the new or rehabilitated facility, based on building square footage as described in the town zoning regulations. Review times will vary and will be based on the square footage of the facility. As opposed to tier two, which is a moderate level of design review, including minor additions to the existing structure such as accessibility improvements for physically challenged or site improvements to site circulation, parking. Tier two projects shall not increase existing lot coverage or alter impervious coverage more than 5%. Review is limited to one and a half hours of review by the team, based upon criteria established in the guidance. Such reviews may typically include review of both site and architectural site elements. The applicant may submit a request for a waiver of a tier three review for consideration as a tier two review. The waiver decision rests at the discretion of the Planning and Land Use Administration, uh, excuse me, Administrator in consultation with the consultant team. A tier one, which is the one that we waive the fee for consistently, represent simple projects with minimal review, such as architectural improvements, signage, exterior lighting or minor site improvements that require review by the client's planning and zoning office. Projects shall not alter the lot coverage or impervious surf, surface coverage. Site and architectural improvements cannot be combined in a tier one review. These projects would be moved to one or two as determined by the client. Review is limited to a half an hour of review time. So the tier threes are pretty involved, um, but this board can waive fees, the fee for tier one has been waived pretty consistently. Tier two, as I said, is $275 and the tier three, which would likely be of a, of a Brainerd Place type, um, application, would be $2,300. I know that the planning department would be happy to share with you when these come in. I, I know that the tier ones, I don't see them because they, they're pretty much done by, um, the planner at the council of government, Sam Gold does a lot of those for us. So gives you a little idea of what we're talking about.
I guess my take on it is, if we as a town want this, which I believe that's what we did, they sent out a survey and the town as a whole did want it, um, I think the town as a whole should pay for it in that scenario. Here we are, we want to better our main street, we want to clean up our main street, yep, we then want to penalize the property owner who may better that property. That's where I have a problem. So if we as a town wanna do it, and I personally do, I think we as a town, so I, I would love to know what, what, how many of these reviews we're actually talking, what kinda dollars? And if it's something feasible, and I think it is, um, I think as a town, and if anybody, you know, I don't like spending taxpayers' money, I think I'm one of the tougher...
Especially for new development, I mean, I can see that the improvements are existing and we do waive that for the tier one, but to pay for developers' review, I, I don't know.
But keep in mind, we get a lot of new taxes even out of new. I want the new taxes, especially if they go through the review process and it looks good, we're gonna get it on the tail end. If we have things in place, it's just a perfect example is, we give tax abatements to stimulate growth. This is, those are good for business, they work. Same here.
But everybody pays application fees, everybody pays for Chatham Health fees, everybody pays, um, if, if they, even, even homeowners, when they come in for a permit, they have to pay. We don't waive permit fees, we don't waive zoning permits.
You bring up a great, a great thing, but we also don't have this rule...
Those are all improvements.
Yeah, we also don't have this rule anywhere else in Portland, except in this area.
That's true.
And that's the difference.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask.
That's the difference.
If you have, if you're doing a development down on Marlboro Street, you don't even have to deal with this.
Correct.
That's true.
I think the businesses on Main Street are at a disadvantage, having to put up with this.
They are. It's a, they, but, but, but hear me out, I'm not necessarily, I wanna make sure I'm clear, I don't necessarily wanna dissolve the whole village district, that's not my goal right now. Um, but I don't believe, using your words, we should be putting them at a disadvantage and that is exactly what this is.
Well, if you wanna pay for these reviews, you have the authority to do that, you can do that.
The problem is, I don't like rules that also let people pick and choose. I'm a firm believer in, we all have a set of rules. In other words, I don't want this board to always be able to decide who, who pays, who doesn't.
No, I'm saying you, if you wanna waive, if you wanna say that you don't want the applicant, a Brainerd Place, to have to go through and pay this review, you can change this.
Let's be careful, I'm not sure Brainerd Place falls into it, Susan, I don't think it does. And you can correct me at the next meeting.
Oh, they're on, they're definitely on Main Street, 'cause I was looking, they're, the, the pharmacy will be on Main Street.
They kept that one separate, they wanted that in a separate LLC for certain reasons.
But that is on Main Street.
Correct, that's not good, they want, that is separate than the whole project.
It's part of their project.
But they want it separate, so that's one lot on Main Street that we may not get a, a fee on, that's different than the, than the, let's be clear, it's different than the whole $40 million development, which we don't, back to Rick, we don't have this review process anywhere else in Portland.
Right, well, but I do wanna point out, just for clarification, Ben, I'm not certain that that's gonna be a separate, it is right now a separate lot, but they may all be merged. So I just wanna make sure that I don't, I don't agree, 'cause I'm not certain, but we can find that out. You know, if you, I know I hear these arguments, um, from other people, um, you as the board approve this contract, if you wanna waive all fees, you can do that.
I think, um, I, I think I would like to see maybe some examples for the last year or so, to have a better understanding, that's kinda how I feel.
I'm not sure there were any, but I will find out for you.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if you have to go two years, whatever, I, I'd just be curious because Ben and I actually had a conversation at length about an example on Main Street and I kinda sided with what his rationale was, so I just would like to have some examples to kinda go off of what we would be taxing the owners with.
Well, I think you have to be aware, um, of, of a couple things. Well, I think you have to be aware of a couple of things, and that is, do you want to keep the, the improvements that this tries to have, as you pointed out, Ben?
Yeah.
In, in the Main Street area? Because it does provide for improved appearance as well as quality of development, and that is pretty much outlined in here, as well as in the zoning regulations. If you agree with that and you want to pay for it, then you can.
You bring up a great point. I'm close, you saying it out loud now makes, I'm closer to that now, because you're right. When, in the village district, there are certain things we're looking for. And it does, just that alone adds a cost to these landowners, for them to improve their property. And then on top of it, we want them to do better things to make our Main Street look better. We then want to whack them with some fees to then, so they can put better things in, so we can tax them more on the tail end. So that, you know, if, if we were forcing a vote right now, I would say we waive all fees, but I would like, I'm with Ralph, let's learn a little bit more.
I will, but I, I don't believe it's used a whole lot. And there may be a disincentive, as you're pointing out.
That's why if we do choose to waive it, I would want a campaign to put it out there.
You might want to ask.
Waiving the fee, we're keeping the process, come on out.
For encouragement.
If you've been waiting to do your roof, your siding, your windows, and you were angry about this fee, because there are certain people out there that I heard that are pretty upset about this, and I get it, I do.
I get it, too. I understand.
Maybe we should ask EDC about this, too, because I know they're, they're, they've been meeting with the.
That's great.
Village District people and trying to get, you know, hear their gripes, so to speak, and, you know.
Sure.
What can we do different? So I, I don't know if we should, I think we should get a little more information on this before we move forward.
Okay. I'll put it on the sixteenth.
And maybe invite EDC to the next meeting if they do want to weigh in, and maybe they're going to tell me I'm, you know, I'm wrong, and that's fine, but I, I.
Again, right now you have within the planning department for planning consultants $8,500.
Well, I, I would think we need to understand the universe of how much money has been paid through this program.
Yeah.
How much recently.
And remember, just because it's been paid in the past, doesn't mean if you make it free, that it will not be more, will not be then encouraged to do more, which may be what you want to do.
I personally do, because then we'll get the property tax on the tail end, so.
Yeah, no, there's, there's, there's that to be said.
Yeah, we just have to look at it and understand, so we know what we, what we'd be taking on.
I agree.
And, and also, it'd also be good to know how many non-tier ones are being waived, and how many tier twos, tier threes are being waived.
None.
None?
None. No, we can't unless you tell us we can.
Okay, I was looking at that, there was a, I thought something with the Land Use Administrator.
Well, there's not, I don't know if it's the fee as much as it's determining.
Which category.
Which category.
Yeah. I think, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, you wanted to see if any got bumped down to save the fee.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's just good to understand how it's being applied now.
Yeah.
And then we can see how we'll then apply it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then you need to withdraw your second and your motion.
I will withdraw it.
So what? Absolutely.
And we'll put it on the agenda for the sixteenth of. Okay, so we'll move on to the next item. Which is the reappointment of the engineering firm for the bike pedestrian consultant services. And it is anchor engineering, and they have done a very good job with our group that has been developing the airline trail. And this would be to continue through June of 2019. And there is no fee charged other than for the hours that they would perform work, not to exceed $6,000, which is already in the town account. Is there any, is there a motion to approve this agreement continuation?
I'll make a motion to.
I'll second it.
By Ralph. Any questions or comments, discussion?
What did we spend last year on that? Just out of curiosity.
Um, it was a little more than the $6,000, Ben, because they were involved more.
Big year.
Yeah, it was more, it was more than the $6,000, and they did have an additional amount. I believe it was less than 20, but I don't, I don't have the exact figure. I know it was a little more.
Do they have a lot more to go to finish the airline trail, or are we getting close on that one?
Why don't we ask?
Or we ask our, our.
Yeah, well, and I was looking at it today. I know that the equipment is out there, they're working on it today, and as long as the weather's good, they're going to make good progress. The base is down, the shoulders are done, the stone dust has been, I think, purchased, and it's, that should take a few days. It shouldn't take more than two or three days to do all the stone dust, roll it, pack it, get it going. There's still time for gates, fences, butts, signage, crossing, lineage for the crossing area, pedestrian crossing. So those things have to be done, too. Our hope is that all that will be done before June 2nd, because that's the day of our hike, and hopefully it'll be all done. I mean, it's a lot of work, all those little things, but I think the engineering for the gate, gates have been done. I think the engineering for the fence, or the purchasing of the fence, is there for the trestle. So I'm hoping that all that stuff would, should be done now that the weather's better. We can get, they, they couldn't get going in March or April, weather was just terrible. And so they just started, I think, a week or two ago. Thank you.
Dave, I've seen him up there working, but I, I've also seen the, a few of the dirt bikers still getting on the trail.
And, and our hope, and this is what we hear at all the different trails, or at least part of the airline trail that goes from Eastham to Willimantic, is that once the trail is open and people are using it, walking regular bikes, those trail bikes seem to go away. Some of the ATVs seem to go away. So the usage is less. Definitely, if there's still abuse, it's something that has to come to the committee and to the Board of Selectmen and, and the Police Department to say, you know, you can't do that. It's illegal, there'd be signage that says that those vehicles are not allowed on that trail. So we'll see how we can reduce that type of behavior. Thank you.
Ready for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Motion carries. Thank you. Um, the next, oh, okay. This is a continuation of our last meeting, action on amendment number five to the agreement for engineering services by and between Town of Portland and the Weston and Sampson Engineers. And you'll remember that you asked us to go back and speak with Weston and Sampson, and a reduction was made in amendment number five in terms of the fees. And if you turn to page, last page, which looks like this, I believe, this is five, correct? Yes. The ten, mine is ten.
Yeah, it is, it's two point, task, task 2.7 and 2.8 was, was still pending.
Do you, do you want to highlight them, Jim, for us?
Sure. Yeah, last week, or last meeting, we approved 2.6, which was bidding phase services, which were effectively complete. Still going through the final review and discussions with the, with the bidders, but effectively complete, so that contract was authorized. The task 2.7, which is miscellaneous additional services, that include, that includes the OST DOT coordination work that's getting performed or needs to be completed, the Connecticut Deep Coordination, some additional cost analysis work that was done in the run-up to the bid, final design alterations, and some necessary field work which was, has been required. And then task 2.8 is the flood management certification, which is the final certification that's required after we go through the, the OST process to get the final approval with that. Did you want me to talk about dollars at all, or are you?
Oh, sure.
All right. No, the, the original dollars that were required or requested were $25,000 for the miscellaneous services. That's been reduced by $2,500, I believe, and the municipality permitting review of $10,200 that was in place was reduced by 20, I think it was $3,500.
Yeah, is that the number now?
Yeah, so basically, that, yeah, 3,800. It's down to 6,500 for the miscellaneous permitting reviews, and it's down to 22.5 for the miscellaneous additional services, which brings it down, you know, roughly 17.9%, you know, percent, about 18% over where those two items were two weeks ago.
Thank you. So last time we approved the bidding phase services, and we did not approve the additional services, which is task 2.7 and task 2.8. So what's in front of you tonight is the approval of, once again, task 2.6 and the 2.7 and the 2.8.
Well, we already approved 2.6.
Yes, but it's just altogether, just to reiterate.
Jim, can you comment on page two? The expenses there is, is this just budget, or is, or is, has this $431,000 been approved? Or is this just estimates, or what's going on with that?
You have work that was done in 2.0, that, you know, all of that is the lump sum of the contracts.
Oh, oh, all the pieces.
Proposed to date, of all the pieces. Going back to the original work that was funded by the grant that was done for feasibility study and preliminary design.
Okay, so I see these, this, right, so what we're voting on tonight is the, toward the bottom of this.
Right, 2.6, 2.7, 2.8.
Six, seven, and eight. Okay.
But for completeness, you have all of the tasks that have been performed and funded.
I see.
2.0, 2.1, 2.2, 2.3.
And that's been, those 2.0, 2.1, 2.2, they've been completed, or are they kind of still in process?
No, those are, those are completed.
Okay.
So what we would be doing is authorizing, right, basically, the contract, which will allocate dollars for what was done in the final, in the run-up to the bid, some additional design work, that's work that was, we were still negotiating on the value of that work, but also on work to finish the certification, the flood certification, and final design, because there's always a little bit of the value engineering that gets done as, as you're heading into, you know, contract phase.
Okay.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve amendment number five?
I'll make the motion.
Sog.
Second to bed, Ben? Any further questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Thank you. Now, the next item is action on number six. Now, this we have not discussed before, so I put it on the agenda for us to review together. And this is, let's see. Article two, four, five. If you go to the back page of, which is page two.
Page two, paragraph four?
Yes. Now, we just approved 2.6, 2.7, 2.8, so this would be 2.9, construction and administrative services, and then 2.10, which is the resident project representative services. So that would be the administration of the work and paperwork for 2.9, as well as a resident project representative, in other words, a person that would be more or less a clerk of the works for the project, for the day-to-day activities. And it's outlined in, in this attachment A, two. But I'll open it up for discussion. Our liaisons to the park committee may want to have some comments, or Ralph and Jim want to have some comments on this?
Well, where we stand right now is that we are looking at some tweaks of the, of the pending agreement that we would develop. So we are looking at, wow, jeez, can empty the room.
Nobody's interested in the park?
All right, was it something I said?
Oh, he now said the park.
So anyway, so yeah, so what's going on right now is we are, we are having conversations with the, the engineering firm is looking at value engineering ideas with the lowest bidder, so that's still in flux. Hopefully, we're going to hear something tomorrow, actually, on that. So I think Friday we'll be talking about. So this kind of ties to it, because we're trying to finish up the final components to whatever is going to be put on the table to complete the project. So, so right now, that's, you know, and we've had some, I think we'll probably have a couple more discussions within the committee with regards to 2.9 and 2.10, because we have resident experts on our committee that, that want to just probably make another pass-through what they've identified within their scope.
Well, how are you, how are you running on your overall budget for this? Are you going to?
Tight.
Are we going to?
Tight.
Tight, that's a good word for it.
That's the, that's the nature of the discussions we're having. Luckily, discussions so far, they've come forward with, suggested some changes that really are the common, the, the citizen is not going to notice the changes, and they don't seem to be a particularly big issue. So we've been able to bring down a, a little bit of cost on what we think will be the cost on the project. So they're just finishing up a final discussion with regards to that.
But you still haven't hired an actual contractor to do all the work, or?
No, that's who we're disc, well.
That's what you're.
I mean, they, they were lower, low bid by a lot, so.
Okay.
So we're having just a discussion with them with regards to a couple of the features.
But, but until we complete sort of the value engineering discussion, you know, then we'll get into, you know, actually awarding the contract and, you know, awarding the bid and contracting it. We wouldn't want to vote on this until we know at those, you know, basically where we're at, to get the additional numbers, see, see where we're going to be with the final engineering and any little tweaks. Well, Ralph said it's exactly right. The type of things that have been identified so far are minor in nature. We're from a functional standpoint, the function of the park. They, they save some costs, but they don't do anything to negatively impact the function of the park. So it's, it's just good value changes that, that have been proposed so far, and.
But, so, just, I'm nowhere near as up to speed on this as you guys are, but this part, but the bond for the park was?
Six million.
Six million, okay. All right, because I'm looking at this 674, and for some reason I had a million dollars in my mind, and I'm there.
That's Weston, that's the, the engineering firm's running, running cost.
Where does the 93 fall into where we thought it was going to? I'm sure we had a, an original number of what we thought this was going to cost. Where, where does that fall?
You mean from previous budget?
Yeah, like, and I know it would be like a napkin budget at this, but, but what did we think the 93 was going to be? I'm just curious. Or did we not? Did we not break it down that, to that extent? I'm not putting anybody on the hot seat. I'm just trying to figure this out.
I don't have some of the people on the committee at the discussions, but I, I, we've never, you know, talked to an actual figure on that.
Well, what it, Weston and Sampson, they, they created a budget, they came up with a $6 million. In that $6 million, they had a number for this. What is this, how does this 93 equate to what they have?
Under contract administration, in the preliminary estimation of costs, I don't have that document with me, but we can look that up.
That was a question, you know, if I, if I recall, we built Rosehill Ball Field for about $2.50. If, I don't even think it was that much when we built the whole field, and now we have close to $2.50 just in the construction administration and the project, and I know things change, and I know this project's much bigger. But I do want to know what these two numbers, 2.9 and 2.10, were estimated at. I think they had a number for that.
Now, there's, in the statement of probable cost?
Yes.
There was, there were definitely numbers that were included for.
This.
Percentage allocations.
Correct.
Just can't recall them, and I don't have a sense of.
Yeah. And I'm not putting anybody on the hot seat.
And I'm not voting on this, correct?
This is just a discussion tonight.
Good number to know.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the only other thing I note is, really, the intent of discussion at this point is to, is to bring together enough funds for contingency.
Yeah.
That's really where we're at at this point, is trying to build the amount of contingency that we would feel comfortable to go forward with. That's where we're just discussing.
Good. Well, did you say a few minutes?
Well, you say a few minutes ago it was like a six million dollar project?
That's what, that's what roughly, that's what the voters are, are willing to go up to.
Okay, so this hundred and forty-six and, and ninety-three thousand are basically four percent of six million.
Right, to manage the project.
To manage the project, so that's not an exorbitant percentage.
Correct, correct, and I, I'm not implying it was. I'm just curious where they came up with this number and how it fell in with their original estimates. I think that's a good question, seeing that they're the ones that created the original number, correct me if I'm wrong, the six million.
The, the statement of probable cost, yeah.
So, I'm just, for example, if you created the number, I would hope you at least, at least bet it, maybe I gave it a little lower to make it look good, whatever.
Yeah.
But that's where I'm at personally.
Well, do we need to, do we need to approve this tonight?
No, no.
I think it's just discussion.
We're not recommending that, it's a discussion.
All right.
And I would, just for the record, I, I can't approve something that says estimate. I'm going to want a number.
I think it's estimate, it says estimate because it's, it's done on an hourly basis.
Yeah, well, you know what?
Keep in mind too, when you're looking at this, that two point oh, two point one, and two point two were done as part of a grant, so they're not actually part of the six million.
Oh, so the?
Just, just good to know on that.
The ninety-one thousand, six hundred?
Yeah, as well as the thirty-three and the forty-nine fifty, I believe.
Well, yeah, well, the, the third, that's the, that comes to ninety-one, six, I believe. No?
No.
Does it?
No, no, those are three separate line items, they did it everything separate.
Oh, okay.
And, and what was the grant?
That's like one seventy-three.
Wow, right.
Those numbers, you know, quick numbers.
So, all that was part of a grant?
Yeah.
Okay.
Lou has a question.
Yeah, what, what was the grant? You were, it's a state grant?
You mean, oh, what, steep, it was a steep grant.
Steep grant.
It was a steep grant, and I actually believe ultimately we, we used two hundred and thirty thousand of it, I thought is what this number was.
Yep. Okay, so you want the, I'll get, I'll pull up the estimate probable cost in that document, September of sixteen.
I think that'll cover most of my questions.
Yeah, sure.
We, we may actually have an up, we should have an updated one that we can look at, or look for Ralph that came to the committee. As we were going through the original value and engineering evolution, there was, they did an updated statement of probable cost for us.
As long as the updated one didn't exceed the six million, I'm okay with looking at that one. If it, if the updated one exceeded the six million, we have a serious problem. So, you may want to bring the first one in.
Yeah, I think you want, you want to look at, I think you're asking, Ben, for the one that was originally forming a label, aren't you?
Well, we went to the taxpayers, we asked for six million to build a park, we had probable numbers, and I understand they're, they're, they're best guess, but the probable numbers better not exceed the six million, because then we have a serious problem, because then we didn't ask for enough. And that would be a problem. So, I, I don't believe that's where we're going, unless that look on your face is something I'm, unless I'm accidentally tiptoeing on something. Let's just get the cost before this conversation turns into something that doesn't need to.
Let's, let's, let's see where we end up with the final cost, which will be the allocated six million. That's what we're targeting.
Well, I also want to see the problem. I want to see both. Thank you.
All right, moving that along. I put on the agenda number twelve, because I've had a few people ask if the selectmen would review the town charter. We're supposed to look at it every so often, and if you would take this opportunity to review it and see if there's any changes you'd like to see potentially, and then we can put it on a future agenda, but I just wanted to bring this to your attention so you can take a look. There are some things within the charter that are probably dated and need to be updated, and there may be some other things that people want to take another look at, so I will keep that on the agenda for us as we proceed. I didn't expect that everybody would have.
Looked at it.
Studied it yet, yet, but I know there's some areas in there that are dated, like the health district, for example. I think it's still less the health department, so you might want to update something of that nature.
Are, are we required every so many years to revise the charter or review?
You don't have to revise it, but you should review it. The charter says look at it every five years. We had full, a full commission look at it about ten or eleven years ago, and there were no changes made from that commission, and before that charter commission, there was another one that didn't finish its work, and that was in like a short amount of time, Rick, I think that was within two or three years that two commissions met, but they didn't, they didn't get any changes made. I want to say the last time changes were made, I will tell you.
And is this on our website? Can I, can I go there and pull it up?
You received one, I believe it is, but you also received one when you became a selectman.
Oh, okay.
Two thousand and four.
I need to go look in the file.
It's the original financial, financial binder from last year, I believe. It was tucked in with a clip.
All right, I, I have that binder.
Yeah, the last time there were any changes made was two thousand and four, but there were additional commissions that met after that date, but no changes were made.
Susan?
Yes.
Can, can the audience?
No, not at this point. Well, if it's a quick question, yes, I'll allow it.
How is, if there is a review, how, how is it communicated? I'm not, I'm not really, because it hasn't been updated or anything, so I really, I don't.
The selectmen are, will take a look at the charter, and if they would like to form a commission, they can, but they look at the charter all the time. Every time the board is elected, we give a copy of the charter and have, and last time we met in November for this board, we did have a presentation by Carrie Olson, and she did point out the various aspects of being a selectman, including the charter, but I think a more formal review is something, if you'd like to do that, we can. You don't have to, but if it's something you'd like to do, you may. You should review the charter every five years is what's asked.
So.
You don't have to, you don't have to change it, but we're asking you to review it.
So, if we wanted to, you know, we review it and we come up with a couple minor tweaks to it, how do, how do we go about that process?
There's a whole legislative, it's actually a stat, a statute for revision of charters, and that's what we have to follow. If you're going to make changes, it is a state law that you have to follow. It's not local law, it's a state law, that all towns have to follow.
Okay.
Okay, appointments to boards and commissions.
I don't think we have any, right? I don't have any.
I'm good.
Okay. Thought maybe, and this is something maybe Jimmy could check, I want to say there was someone on inland wetlands that was going to go from an alternate to a full member, but I don't, I did not receive anything from one of the town committees on that, but if you could check for me, see if you have anything.
So, you thought someone was?
But I didn't get any formal.
I don't know if that one or the one, they all blend together.
Yeah, there was, there was an alternate added, but I thought someone had.
That was the last meeting, right?
Yeah.
Meaning, one of them, yeah, one or two ago.
We did add an alternate.
An alternate?
Yes.
I will, I will check on that as well, and if you have, any of you have any information on that, call the office, please. Okay, we'll go to refunds for, of excess payments.
All right, I'll, I'll read them, I guess. All right, I motion, make a motion that we refund three hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety-six cents to Thomas P. Gent.
Second.
Gent.
Second has been made?
Very good, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries?
I make a motion that we refund forty-nine dollars and sixty cents to Cesar R. Gonzalez.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries?
I make a motion that we refund, refund one thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty-two cents to Kathleen M. Lark.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries?
And I make a motion that we refund two thousand five hundred and seven dollars and fourteen cents to Robert and Dionne, Colleen Dionne.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries? Status reports. I will give you a couple of items. Let's see, tomorrow, there is a meeting at DOT on the traffic permit application for Brainerd Place, so I will attend that, as well as the applicant and their engineers will be there with the Department of Transportation. This is the second of three steps for the traffic certificate that has to be issued for that project. And the sidewalk project was bid, and there is an apparent low bidder. There was a meeting last night of the sidewalk committee, and there were some discussion items, and it appears that the one million dollars is sufficient to do all of the sidewalks that the committee and you had recommended to be done, including the alternates. So, I will put that on the agenda for your review of that agreement, that contract on the sixteenth as well. In the meantime, if anyone wants to look at the final plans for the sidewalks, they're available, they will be available here at the library, so you can look at the maps. I have a copy in Chris Leckman's office, and there is a copy, of course, in the Public Works Department, so if anyone wants to look at those plans, that they, they may do so. The Spring Street project is a few weeks out with our new Public Works Director. I want to be sure that Bob Shea has a chance to look at those, as well as you're more than welcome to look at, at what we have so far. It is not ready to go out to bid yet. There's, it's a rather complicated bid, because we have to keep people with water and sewer sufficiently, so that is certainly something that's very important. Other than that, any other status reports?
Did you hear any more back from the, from Christie Capino's office on Monday for the depot?
I did not, not yet, no. There is, we're going to look at the potential of leasing from the state of Connecticut, the depot that's located near subway, but we want to look at it first, so members of the Airline Trail Committee are going to possibly go on Monday to take a look at it.
Would that affect?
That looked like a good date.
Would that affect Top Dog?
No, they, they have a separate lease for a separate piece of land. They don't lease the building back.
Oh, okay, I just, I don't want to run into.
What would we do with it if we leased it?
I'm sorry?
What, what would we do with it if we leased it?
Well, that's what the Airline Trail Committee will be reviewing, and they have been reviewing it in terms of a, an area that could be utilized for a museum, or it could be utilized as a historic building. You don't even have to use it if you don't want to, but it certainly needs to have attention given to it. It's something the Airline Trail has hooked into.
It could also, it could also possibly generate income as a bike repair shop right on the trail.
Well, I, I know years ago, the trail was going to go to there. That was going to be like the terminus.
And our hope is to go past there and go to the bridge.
Okay.
And so, we have had conversations with Butler, because the next step from Camp Ingersoll is to go through the Butler's property, and we had a conversation about a week ago, last week, and there'll be more conversation on how we'll be able to do that. It's an active excavation site, so you have to figure out how you can get around that with walkers, bikers, and pathlay. The other possibilities are, are good, is that the field that is, used to be the Jarvis property, they're going to put a brand-new Dairy Queen and other stores there, and they would love to have.
I heard that.
People stop for ice cream on the bike path as they go forward, and then the driven, the RVN people, who are the next owners, they have agreed to allow us to bring that pathway through there. Next step is to go from William Street Extension to try to get to High Street and then cross, cross the road, or go to Main Street on Free Stone Avenue, and then access the bridge that way. So, there's a few different pathways.
It goes right behind the Portland Plaza, and then it comes out at like Anderson's.
Right, and there are, there are several different owners along the way, so we have to get permission from those owners. And the state owns a piece of property in back of the plaza. Maybe the state would allow us to use some of that, and that would bring us to Free Stone Avenue, and in many towns, in many cities, what they do is they put a line on the street called Share the Road, so you have bicycles and walkers that can share that part of the road, and that would bring you to Main Street, which, as far as the economic development goes, if people were walking and biking to Main Street before they went to the bridge, or coming from Middletown to the Free Stone Avenue, they could shop at some of the stores that are along the way. So, that would be a benefit economically as well as health-wise.
I guess the only thing I would point out, if, I'd want to know a lot more about if we were planning on potentially leasing the depot, number one. What is this going to add for insurance? Number two, what are the costs involved with the upkeep, if any? I would definitely want to know all of this. Who's going to pay? Is this the town of Portland? Is this the Airline Trail?
I'm going to put you on the email once I know that the time, I think it's going to be eight o'clock on Monday, if you're available.
Not sure, didn't bring my work calendar, but we're, I think, a little premature. I, I like the idea, but there's obviously, it sounds like eight or 10 property, you'd have to work out some sort of path to get there. I think we're a ways out.
Path to get, what do you mean, Ben? You mean, you mean a theoretical path or an actual path to walk to it?
Both.
Or both?
Both at this point.
Yep, okay.
I'm not sure, you know, yes, there have been communications, but Cody's, I think, one of the largest section of it.
No, the, the depot is just the building, right?
No, I'm back to Lou's point, where he would like.
Oh, you mean extending the trail?
Yes. Because otherwise, the depot's in the middle of nowhere and it's in a very busy spot.
Well, that's kind of why I was asking, what are we going to do with it?
Yeah, and heaven forbid, that crosswalk, I don't even like the way it was laid out. I'm not even sure you can push the button without stepping on grass to cross sixty-six. I can remember when I was in high school, a kid got killed there. That's not ideal to try to get, I like your Free Stone to Main Street, a little safer, a little better.
Sure.
Not sure, I'm not sure where we're going with leasing a depot, and if it, if it's just the Airline Trail, it's a separate little LLC, separate little group paying for it. I want to be very cautious with the taxpayers' money if you're thinking it's the town of Portland. I'm not sure where we're at with this, you know, I want, I want to be careful. Like, this could be a big problem, maybe not, but I think there's a lot more to it than, hey, let's just pick this up because we can, because obviously, it's a liability to them. I would think they would be interested in getting that liability off their books if we were willing to take on that liability.
I think right now the railroad is leasing it, Ben.
What's that?
I think right now the rail road, at least for a period of time, I don't know whether it's expired or not, but I think they have been leasing it. So, it, it's something that we're bringing to you for consideration. You have to take a look at it, see what you want to do. You bring up a lot of good points. You bring up a lot of good points.
Thank you.
So, you?
Yeah.
So, I will send out an email to all of you so that, you know, and I'll, I'll notice it as a meeting, so that you can attend.
When do you anticipate that being?
Perhaps Monday, early morning, because the DOT owns it and has a key.
And they're going to come, oh, you're, we're going to get to look at it?
There, you would meet there, yes, to be able to look at it.
All right. Keep us in the loop.
I will, thank you. Any other status reports?
Probably just the Water and Source Subcommittee. We had our first meeting. Basically, the current plan right now is we're going to be setting up, we have set up a date for a tour with the, the members of the committee to go talk about the tie and bond report, as well as to take a tour of the facilities and see what kind of work has to be done, and they kind of do a little bit of a level set and, you know, where you make sure they understand how both systems work and the, the breadth of the infrastructure that we have to work on.
Any questions? Public comment? Yes.
My turn.
I wonder if we're going to get a chance to speak.
Of course, now, don't ask us to leave. Shirley Olson, fourteen Russell Avenue. First off, I want all of you to know, I do not have a dog. I have a black cat.
I have a black cat with green eyes that rides in the car that says voodoo on the license plate, watch out, everybody. In relation to Rocky, when the article came out, three or four of the kids in the neighborhood were already out talking about Rocky. One of whom I spoke said, this is what Rocky needs. This is someone that's going into biz, he's currently in Gilversburg. He said, Rocky needs a leash, and it needs to be used. He said, Rocky needs some training like his daddy does. And he said, Rocky needs a fence. This is somebody in the fourth grade that knows what Rocky needs. I mean, it was heartbreaking to hear him. And he has a dog, and Annabelle and her sister have a dog, and their dog's name is Pepper. The kids were right there. The article came out on Friday, and they were already out talking about it on Saturday. And I have dogs on both sides of me, and I'm still walking, haven't been bitten. Matter of fact, I babysit one when mom and dad aren't home, and she's out in the yard. She doesn't like the new arrangement of the soccer field on, no, at Middlesex Avenue Park. That just interferes with her life. But no, the kids were just like that on it. And I have spoken to Paul a few times, and Rocky's gonna go home. Let's let Rocky go home now, rather than later, and absorb the expenses of any potential lawsuit. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa, get your hand up.
I did, do I need to get that up?
It's up to you, you don't have to if you don't want to.
Okay.
It's up to you.
I think, I just wrote to know, Scott, I think it's an excellent opportunity to look at the charter. Coming from the corporate world, knowing that we haven't looked at a document since two thousand and four, is really surprising.
No, it's not true, we did look at it. It wasn't, what I should have said clearly, it hasn't been amended since that time. It has been reviewed, and there were commissions, Melissa, but two thousand and four is the last date of any changes.
Okay, well, even, even with that being said, the world changes, and everything around us changes. And with the opportunity of looking at the charter, you're able to look at ourselves, you know, the ins and outs of Portland, if you will. What are lawsuits about? What are our biggest complaints about as a town? And when I say what are lawsuits about, I'm a taxpayer, I'm paying, you know? All of you are paying. This is an excellent opportunity to take a look at those items. What are we paying out for? What are we not, what's not clear to people? This is an opportunity to stop having those gray areas, where this one can do this, and this one can do that, but this one can't. That stops, because with that ambiguity, that's expensive. Ambiguity is expensive. Guidelines and parameters are efficient. We're humans, if you give us guidelines, we give them. And this is an opportunity to do that. And the very first thing is to look at how much money we are spending in lawsuits. How much money are we spending on attorneys? Because I can tell you as someone who's sat in a lot of meetings, and I'm looking at this not only as someone who's invited to that little band, so to speak, but as a taxpayer, it is the biggest waste of money. So this is our opportunity as a group to say, you know what, what can we do better? And let's stop spending money on things we get no return on our investment, none. I can tell you that from experience, none. So let's not wait. And even if it's minor updates, it's just, again, it's in my mind that we wouldn't have any updates. I'm looking through the charter, I pulled it up, and there's nothing about something that I can find, nothing. You know, there's talk about memes, I think, it's like, you know, how much, how much have we spent on lawyers and lawsuits? How much time has been spent on the DBA? This is a hot topic here, and this is an opportunity, and I hope you all take advantage of it.
Thank you.
I'll be at those meetings.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, you don't have to, you can stay there if you're more comfortable, whatever you choose.
In relation to this whole issue, it was something that caught my attention, was the fact that Karen Caruccio had authorized or stated or deemed, or whatever the appropriate word would be, that Rocky was adoptable. I minded that she was the one that issued the kill order, and I'm not gonna repeat what was in the River East, but I think perhaps that in these instances, that there should be someone different determining the kill order. It should not be placed all on one person.
That's why there was an appeal process.
Yeah.
A prolonged appeal process.
Yeah.
But that's the law, that's the law of Connecticut, and we followed it.
But if you have a second person in your administration...
We follow the law, Shirley, we follow the law, and that's what the law says to do in terms of...
The law says that the person who determined the dog was adoptable can be the person...
That's not, no, it doesn't say that.
Alright, so how are you telling me that you can't have two different people to...
Well, I can, I'll share that with you, I just don't have it with me, but I'll share it with you, so that you could see.
I just think it's kind of, and I think actually...
Understood, understood.
...Karen in uncomfortable positions.
Thank you.
See, I got something on this.
Yes, could you have your name, please?
I really don't want to, but Danielle Piatti.
And your address is?
Thirty-five Strickland Street.
Thank you.
In Portland.
Thank you.
You know, I, you know, I'm a dog lover, I have a pit myself.
No, I have a pet, Black Cat.
No, yeah, but I'm a dog lover, I have a pit myself, he's the friendliest thing, I think they just get the bad end of the deal. I mean, from what I hear, I mean, he's not aggressive when you go down to see him. I mean, was he provoked? I mean, I don't know the real story behind it, but was he provoked? Because some people, I had a neighbor, when I was back at school, that provoked our rottweiler, and wanted our dog gone off the property, but we had Charlie at our house, and he saw, Charlie, animal patrol officer, saw what happened, and then the owner of, and behind our house, didn't know what to say after that. So honestly, the dog would have been provoked. I mean, if it was aggressive, then, you know, it's, it's, you know, two sides of the story, but the dog, I mean, from what I hear, he's, you know, down there. People have asked if he's adoptable, because he's so friendly down there. I mean, I think this dog should get a chance, and the owner, which I've heard, will get a fence, somebody's helping him do that. I think this dog should be able to go back to the owner and get trained, probably even with the lady that spoke, Natalie, she's willing to train. I mean, I, I think this dog should be safe.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm just saying, because like I said, I'm a dog owner, and these dogs get bad rap.
Thank you, Tim. I don't think there's any other comments tonight, because there's, unless...
She zipped them.
Going once?
Yeah.
I thank you very much. Informal discussion by the selectmen, is there anything additional from the selectmen?
Hi, guys, how you doing?
Good.
I have nothing on follow-up, so I would ask for a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of negotiations.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded? I thank everyone.